We will begin the Town of Old Saver zoning commission meeting from Monday, July 15th at 7:00 PM. Town Hall, First Floor Conference Room 302 Main Street, Old Saver. Roll call, myself, Mark Caldarella, Chairman, John Henry, Secretary, regular commission members Bob Friedman and Laura Gray. Jerry Lewis is not here this evening, so in place we will seat Justin Terrible. You're up to speed on everything to this point on the various subjects, which you are. Thank you very much. Minutes, make a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting, which was...
June 17th.
June 17th, 2024, is there a second? To accept the minutes of Monday, June 17th, 2024, as presented. As presented, any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. Forgot to also mention that we have Mike Kelly and Brenda Dyson here this evening as alternates. Chris Costa, our CEO Officer, Joanne Galley, our Recorder. Five in the, six in the audience, and I believe four online. Correspondents, anything other than what relates to this evening's agenda? Hearing any, we'll move on to new business, A, Little Pub, area discussion, expand outdoor seating, and add agricultural uses, 1231 and 1235 Boston Post Road, Assessors Map 27, Lots 37, 38, and 39, Business B3 District, Pedestrian Node, Applicant 1231 Bee Pro's LLC, Agent Joe Ren, Professional Engineer, Mr. Ren.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to ask, since everyone in the room is for the last application, would it be pertinent to move that up front, and I'll just kick Little Pub to last?
Is that something the other would like to do is go forth so we can amend the application, or do you want to wait towards for your position at the end? So amend the agenda to move Little Pub to last, correct? And move Applebee Holdings LLC to the first. So continuing public hearing, is there a second for that? Okay, seconded by Laura. Any discussion, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, thank you very much. So Applebee Holdings LLC, application for special exception use to construct a 12,624... Oh, we're moving, oh, okay, I thought we were flipping the two. Is that what you intended, Joe? Yes. To flip Applebee with you?
Yeah, nine custom, there's also my application, but everyone else in the room is for that, so with...
So we have Atlas Outdoor after Little Pub.
That's fine, as long as they're okay with that, I'll go second.
So Atlas Outdoor first, is that...
Well, Atlas moved nine custom first, and then Little Pub to last, so they hold their position on two.
I don't think we can do that, because it's new business, both, continue public hearing.
I mean, rearrange it if you want to, just have that.
Little Pub, just a preliminary discussion, so we can...
Just add it to the end, and just go on to Atlas Outdoor and...
Right. Okay, sorry for the confusion. All right, so we will move on to new business B, Atlas Outdoor Application for Site Plan Modification. For modifications to the previously approved parking plan at 250 Middlesex Turnpike, MAP 52 Lot 94 Gateway District, B4 District, Applicant Owner 250 Middlesex Turnpike LLC. Action, consider modification enacted by August 19th, 2024, no later than September 3rd of 2024. And for the Atlas, is it mine?
Summer Hill.
Mike Odd?
Mike Odd?
Yes, good evening. Just for the, just for the record, I'm Mike Odd, I'm a licensed professional engineer.
Mike, can you speak up, we can't hear you.
I apologize, I cannot share my screen for some reason this evening, and can you hear me now?
I hear you better.
Okay.
Speak as loud as you can, okay?
There would be one second, let me see if I can improve it. Okay, is that, is this better on the sound?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I apologize, I'm having problems hearing, I'm not going to be able to share my screen, but this is, this is, as you said, Mr. Chairman, this is a modification of the previous approval for 250 Middlesex Turnpike for the Atlas Outdoor Facility. Town staff from, from the Planning and Zoning Department has made inspections of the site. There were several things that had to be modified on the site to bring the site into conformance with the plan. They were, they were fairly minor, like lighting locations, planting locations, signage, that kind of thing, but, but one, one thing that the applicant has done was modify the parking, and that was rightfully so, first said that that was a too big a modification to be approved administratively, and that we should bring an application to the commission for the modification. So the surveyor for the project, Dick Gates, performed, completed an as-built survey, which I, hopefully you have in front of you. And I apologize for not being able to share the screen. I also, I also provided a copy of the approved site plan, which I, I think I just saw that you also have in front of you, the originally approved site plan. So this application is very simply for changes to the parking. We have the same number of parking spaces that was required in the original application. I think that total is 16. And they are, they are just located in different locations, but the parking does conform to the zoning regulation requirements, including the 25-foot landscape buffer along the highway line of State Route 144. So it's, it's really, it's really as simple as that. Again, I apologize, I wish I could share my screen, but I think, I think you might be able to see by looking at the plans that we submitted, that it's pretty straightforward.
If I understand correctly, Rod, that what you did say is that the same number of parking spots are on the amended version as there was in the as-built, is that the location of the parking spots has changed? Is that be correct?
Correct, except, so the, and I, and I think you, if I heard you right, you may have just misspoke a little bit. The number of parking spaces is the same as the original application, and the as-built shows those parking spaces, and as you said, they are, they are in a slightly different location. The, the as-built survey that you have in front of you represents what's on the ground today.
Do you have any questions? Bob? We have, part of this submission was an eight and a half by 11 paper that says it's a statement of use. According to the regulation, Section 51.6.4, this is not a statement of use. If there is a change in the use, please use 51.6.4 to mark, to present the changes in the uses that were previously approved, and if there is no change to the previously approved statement of use, then say so. But what we have submitted as part of this application is not a statement of use as, as presented.
So my understanding is that that should be called, that's the description of what they're proposing to change. It's not the full statement of use, the statement of use that was submitted with the initial site plan approval holds, I think it's more of a...
Right.
A statement of use as to what's changing for this, but it doesn't void out the initial statement that was provided with the initial application submitted.
Well, then, but it's labeled statement of use. The statements herein are not incorrect, but this is not a statement of use. So it should refer to the previously approved application and the statement of use that was part of that. It says no other modifications as the original approval are requested under this application. All right, so if they have, they're mentioning that they are requesting site plan approval for modification to the parking, all right. It just...
It's, it's a little misleading, but there's no change to the statement of use.
All right. It does, it doesn't strictly comply, but it's good enough, as long as it's... There is a reference to the previous approval, that's, okay, all right. I, I'm sorry I brought it, never mind.
It's quite all right.
You should have a date on it, at least have a date on it. Something that ties it in.
It does, it does.
Yeah.
Cover sheet to it. Are there any questions relative to the change on the parking from any of the commissioners? No, Laura, no. Aubrey, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Ren? So based on that, I would make a motion to approve the Atlas Outdoor Application for Site Plan Modifications, for modifications to the previously approved parking plan, 250 Middlesex Turnpike, MAP 52 Lot 94 Gateway Business B4 District. Second by John Henry, is there any discussion? Not hearing any, we move to a vote, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, passes 500. Thank you, Ms. Rod.
Thank, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Okay, now we move on to continuing public hearings. A, which is Applebee Holdings LLC, application for special exception use to construct the 12,624,000 square foot cannabis micro cultivation facility at 9 Custom Drive, MAP 46... MAP 46, 1-9, Gateway Business B4 District, Applicant is Applebee Holdings LLC, Agent is Attorney Matthew Rosenthal, application closed, public hearing by July 15th of 2024, and no later than July 21st of 2024. From our last previously meeting in June, in our minutes, there were three points that we were looking for clarification on. One was the commission didn't have the latest plan that included the windows, roofed areas over exits, and the loading area, which needed to be submitted, which we do have in copy tonight. Commission also asked for more detailed statement of use showing days and hours of operation, projected vehicle trips per day, which we have an updated statement of use, and that we were waiting on Fire Marshal Mr. Terencey about his concerns in an email to the commission, which we have since received. So if we could address those issues this evening, I would enjoy that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Joseph Hammer for the applicant. Very quickly, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Ren, the civil engineer, to supplement our prior presentation in a couple of respects. But the revised statement of use, which you, I was trying to pull it up here, which you requested, indicates the hours of operation as requested, and it also indicates the anticipated number of vehicles per day. So if there's any questions on either of those elements, we're happy to answer them, but we added some specificity to the, to the prior version of this document, which had not given those two points of information specifically.
Could you further, the commission, identify their location in the statement of use?
Sure.
Please.
I think one of them is on the page that inch two of five, towards the bottom, just for security. There's a second sentence, operations will run seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then in the paragraph directly above that, again, some of the language was modified, but it currently says deliveries and shipments will occur daily as needed, references the loading dock and the after-hours delivery return door or drop box, which was also added to the statement of use. That's in the event that a third-party delivery company does not dispose of the product by the end of the business day, under the Connecticut state regulations, they need to return it to the facility. That's after hours, it would be in the drop box. And we've also indicated that on a typical day, two to four delivery vehicles would be anticipated, with a maximum of 10 anticipated on any given day. And I think the rest of that paragraph, I think, is pretty much the same as it was to the original. And I think the next item, Mr. Chair, the architectural elevation, we did provide the current version of that, showing no windows facing Interstate 95 and I believe, I know that Mr. Ren had a brief discussion with the ARB at its last meeting, and I believe a lot better has been submitted as part of your record indicating that the ARB has had some issues with its design. Is that correct? And then the third item, we actually submitted an additional letter from our co-consultant, Joe Versteeg, in the file regarding his opinion that the building as proposed will be in compliance with the fire code, including for fire truck access. And I understand that the Fire Marshal has sent an email to you, which I also believe is in the record, where he indicates agreement with that, that essentially the plans as presented are in compliance. So that's the third element of the new information. And then beyond that, I just wanted to mention, I see in your file that some information had been submitted by a member of the public regarding odor, you know, expressing some, some questions. And I just wanted to briefly state that state-of-the-art odor control equipment will be utilized in the facility, technology that's in widespread use in facilities of this type, you know, in other locations around the country, standard type, type of equipment. There's no incineration or burning activity of any, of any kind, no smoke that would be admitted accordingly. Primarily, it's filtering, you know, of air in and out of the building through an ATRAC system with air purification. But in addition to the technology that'll be supplied, there are varying types and degrees of human oversight of those controls, and it goes from employee training at the outset of, of operations, to regular maintenance and inspection of the equipment, changing of filters, maintaining an adequate supply of extra filters for whatever a change is needed. You know, again, inspections throughout the facility, around the facility. Also, my understanding is there is a, is a way for any member of the public who has a concern to communicate that, I believe, through an email that will be set up for that purpose, where they can express a concern, fill out a form, if anything like that were to come in, it would be examined promptly, and action would be taken promptly if it's needed, so...
Where would that information be found by the general public? Email address?
Whoops, where'd you just go? We have our... Matt, do you know where the email contacts will be available to the public? How will that, how will that work?
We will, there will be a, it'll be on our website, and we will also obviously communicate with the neighbors, so they'll aware of a process for communication, so they will have access to, you know, we'll, we'll clearly post a, an email account.
And I should just maybe add, for the record, that's Attorney Matthew Rosenbaum, who just spoke also from McDermott Reynolds, an investment for the applicant. And again, as we indicate the last time, we'll be in compliance with all state requirements for a facility of this nature.
For odor containment, is that correct?
As well as in all respects.
But in, in this particular discussion, relative to odor emission, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that, that meets the state standards?
The system being proposed, particularly as I think purpose-built building, it will actually exceed all state standards.
So if you have any questions, we have a, our consultant is available, but we believe, you know, for all these reasons, and the information that we presented to you previously, that the facility, you know, complies with all of your standards under the terms of these applications.
Are you, have you seen the letter from Jacobson dated June 28th?
Yeah, but I'm sure that Mr. Ren will kind of address that if I could, and I guess he might have another, another small...
Do you want to, want to move on to, to that, before the questions come from the commission and before the public?
Sure, generally, I think this is relatively brief, and then easily do that.
Doesn't matter, I'm saying, good evening, everyone, for the record, Joe Ren, Special Engineer of the Go, Main Street, in Old Saver. And yes, we did receive Jacobson's letter dated June 28th, that was the Friday before the July 4th, 3. And the comments were very minor in nature, so we were at the time, we were waiting, we were about two weeks in at that point, waiting for additional Fire Marshal comments to do a full revision to the plan. We received the Fire Marshal comments via email today about 11 o'clock this morning. So because of that, we revised the plan today, and I brought four copies for you. And I'll quickly, all the changes are extremely minor. And related to those commentary from the engineer, because the Fire Marshal did not have any additional comments or additional changes, Fire Marshal Pete Terencey, sorry, Fire Marshal Pete Terencey, essentially said in that email, which you should have a copy, part of your record, that everything that we provided to them, and recall, last month, we had a fire truck turning exhibit, showing all the wheel pads, he reviewed that along with the site plan, and he was in agreement with our code person, Mr. Versteeg, who's with us, is that it meets all of the fire code requirements for a vehicle entering the site and maneuvering through the site and exiting the site. So there was nothing to change relative to that, other than what we did do is, on the fire truck exhibit, if you recall, there were some additional tweaks to landscaping into one of the islands over in this general area, east side of the site. So we took that information that you already had in front of you, that he already saw on that exhibit, and we incorporated those items into the actual site plan. So what we see on here with that island, with the light moved back, tree moved back, a couple of the arbivores on the northern edge moved back. As the truck turns and the overcarriage swings over the pavement, we just wanted to make sure there were no disruptions in his way. So that was what was on the fire truck exhibit that he reviewed and approved. And now it's just on to this site plan, that, I just passed up four copies of that. Very similar, exactly what we discussed last time on the exhibit, so no change from what you had already seen almost a month ago, back on June 17th. Getting into the Jacobson letter, there are five very minor comments. The first one is about crosesements, since Attorney Hammer didn't really mention this. We talked about this last time, since these properties touch each other above with this property line here, the top, the northern building and the northern site, as we discussed that until last time, this was not part of this application, it's just the, the lower site and this proposed building, nothing to do with the existing building. However, if you recall, the fire truck exhibit, we did have the fire truck turning up into this area, backing out and being able to, kind of like a hammerhead turnaround, and pulling out through the site forward. So basically, number one, in Jacobson's letter, just memorializes, he has a suggestion that we have crosesements across both, just to permanently allow that movement to happen. There was some discussion of having a gate across the property line, so there's really no daily through traffic, not that there would be, but just to prevent that, and then the access to that gate would be obviously provided to the fire department, if that was something that was desired. But his comment is just based on the, the crosesements and discussions with the attorneys, that upon approval, that's no problem at all, crosesements can be applied to both for access. It's not, to be clear, it's not providing access for vehicles or daily traffic to and from the site. It's just clearly for when there, if and when there's an emergency situation on either lot, that they have access all the way through. It's not for the public to access the site. We do have legal frontage all the way out to the cul-de-sac, we have a full driveway coming in that accesses all sites, and that would be the main access to the public street, not this, that is just strictly for fire emergency access. Number two, the parking calculations, we discussed the parking calculations at length last time. Those have not changed, we went through all the specific uses in the building with the floor plans that were done by Craig Lalabert, architect. And we discussed the proposed parking spaces, those ratios have not changed. And he just went through, and he just said, you know, he just suggested that you look at that, make sure that you're in agreement, I think last time we were in agreement with that what we are proposing for quantity of parking spaces matches the use of the building per regulation. Number three?
Mr. Ren, on the parking calculations, it's still 13 spaces, right?
It's the same as before, there are seven here, including the handicap, and then six over here, so 13 total, yes.
Those calculations were based on the gross floor area table provided on the right?
Yes.
And the sum of the gross floor area table, specific areas listed therein is 9585, and yet in the statement of use, it says the, the overall gross floor area is 12,624. So which areas constitute more than 3,000 square feet of the 12,000 that are not part of the 9,585? of the 9,585?
All the parts of the building that don't meet your definition of gross floor area regulations. For example, the partial basement, not quite the western half, but a good chunk of the western part of the building is outlined in the site plan, that's a fair amount of area, that's probably more than a third of the actual footprint of the building, that does not count as square.
The individual gross floor area labels in the newer condition. It's A3, so the first floor. Individual boxes there add up to 3,408. And yet on the gross floor area table, it's 5,276. So there's like 2,000 square feet that are not shown on page A3.
Is that the basement plan, or first floor plan? I don't have that.
First floor.
So the 34th, I'm not looking at it, but my guess is that that's that particular use, and then there are other uses as well, because the building footprint is bigger than 34.
Well, each of the rooms is labeled and it has square footage. And except for the thickness of the walls, there's nothing that shows that there, that would justify such a difference in the square footage.
Craig Lalabert, the architect, is online, I think we'll let him speak to that. It should all add up, it should be consistent on the site plan. So Mr. Lalabert, can you hear us quick?
Yeah, I think I can.
So Greg, question?
Okay, yeah, you can hear me.
Yeah, the question is on the first floor plan?
Page A3 and A4, first floor and second floor, there are square footages allocated to all the rooms, sections. Not all of the corridor, I know, on page A4, one corridor has square feet allocated to it, but not the rest of the corridor. And either way, the sum of all of the square footage shown on pages A3 and A4 doesn't agree with the square footage for first and second floor in the gross floor area table on the site plan.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking for A4 right now, and I, for some reason, I cannot find it.
On A3 in the lower right-hand corner, and split it as 276. Flower ones, total about 2,800 square feet. Then adding in the bathrooms, couple hundred more square feet, that's 3,000, a little over 3,000, 82 for the security area, we're up to about 3,100. The vegetation room is 370, so we're almost 3,500. What he doesn't list on here is the corridor, but all of the corridor, with the exception of the staircase and the elevator, is added in as gross floor area, that was included in the parking calculation. So the additional, yeah, the additional, it's like 1,600 square feet or so, Craig, is corridor and common space.
Yes.
So the corridor is the part that's not labeled, the two or...
Yeah, corridor is not, you didn't have the square footage on the corridor, correct.
Just looking for some kind of consistency here with the numbers, and they, they don't, they are inconsistent from page to page.
Which, which one is inconsistent? The 5270, the only number that's not here is the corridor number, so that would be the balance of the sum of the areas that are listed?
Yes.
Minus the 5276, right, Craig?
That's correct.
Stairwells and elevator shafts don't count.
Stairwells are removed, elevator shaft is removed.
We even had to count, on the second floor, there's an overhang at the entry of the building, and we had to count all of that as gross floor area too, so that's...
Yeah, we also counted the roofed areas over the loading area and also over both exits.
So Craig, on A3, the first floor plan, that also includes the overhang, right? And all the roof corn openings?
Yes, it does, those are 611 square feet. It's listed there. Stayed around.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. First floor, roof downstairs, that's another...
First line under the box.
So that's another 611, so it's actually like 4,100, so the extra 1,100 or so square feet is corridor.
Is all corridor, which we did not list the square footage in the floor plan.
Still find it hard to believe that, from the statement of use, wherein it says the overall gross floor area that includes the areas which do not constitute gross floor area under the regulations is 12,624 square feet. And so if you subtract out the areas which do not constitute gross floor area, that would be elevator shaft and stairwells.
And the basement area.
And my, I find it difficult to believe that there's a, more than 3,000 square feet of stairwells and elevator shaft.
Yeah, the 12,000 and change, that's kind of an irrelevant number, actually, we had a treaty lending discussion of how to show that, because your regulations count gross floor area with a very specific definition. And that's provided, and obviously that number is less than the 12,000, the 12,000, we weren't even going to put in the application, because there's nothing in there's no regulation that asks us for that number.
Yes, the regulation requires the gross floor area be measured to the exterior walls.
Which it all is.
And these allocations on pages A3, A2, I'm sorry, A3 and A4 might be interior calculations. And so they, it doesn't add up to the same number.
It does, you're just, you're not seeing the number for the corridor, and if you had that, it would all add up.
Right, and I also think that the flower rooms, the vegetation room, and any room that we have square footage does not include walls. Those are net square footage.
Does not include walls.
The flowering room.
For the flower rooms.
The basement is not a storey, and therefore doesn't count as part of the gross floor area.
The standard is included as part of that 12.
But that's only 2,000 square feet, there's still another 1,000 square feet. Is 1,000 square feet of stairwells and elevator?
Corridors.
Could be.
No, corridors, we...
You counted that in there?
Toward the park.
The map.
Stairwells are very large.
Okay.
Craig, how large are the stairwells in the elevator?
And 200, 3,000.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that clears that up, thanks.
There are very, very tall ceilings in the lower floors, so the stairwells are very large.
Sure.
They take up, and they're double-sided up and down, right? So they take up a lot of area, and then we have an elevator shaft on both floors.
Oh, yeah. No, the question came up, because on page A4 for the second floor plan, there's only one portion of the corridor for which the square footage is denoted. The rest of the corridor is not. So I was looking for some way to justify all of the square footage added to the numbers that were provided in tables.
Understood, and now with this discussion, you should have that.
It didn't have.
Right, it didn't have it on the plan.
All right, question about the mechanical room area?
The basement?
On page A4, second floor, floor plan.
Yeah, it's the roofed...
Other question for you, Craig?
It's the roofed area above, on the second floor, that you access from the center of the corridor.
That's correct. The interior doesn't have a roof on it.
It's what, it's right, it's outside the building, right?
It is outside the building.
So the mechanicals are outside the building, on the roof, at that far. And is that consistent with the front elevation, which has, shows the roof all the way from left to right?
Yeah, if you look on the rear elevation, the dark area on the rear elevation, right below there, that's the...
There are no, that extend above this front elevation drawing, right?
No, on the lower elevation there, right where your right hand is, that elevation shows the mechanical screening, and you can see that the roof, the top of the roof goes above that area.
All right, but there won't be any exhaust fans or anything higher than what is shown on page A1?
No. That was one of the very first things we implemented in the design.
On the windows across the front elevation on page A1, looking on, let's say, on the right side of the, of the front elevation, there's a double windows on the second floor and single windows on the first floor. The ARB was okay with that.
Yes, this is from today in your packet from ARB, we did discuss that again informally, just for clarification.
Well, it's on the front elevation.
They're fine with the entire building. The clarification was on the back, that they didn't need any additional articulation. And they said that.
There's sufficient building articulations in the I-95 facing rear elevation that it meets the regulations. And the regulations do, if there's no windows at all, then all you need to do is provide articulations. The ARB recommendations from our regulations didn't require windows on a wall.
Yeah, there is the 40-foot bump out, that center section, if you look on the floor plan, bumps out. Or that was a second thing we incorporated into the...
Okay, no more questions.
Thank you. Just to finish up the engineer letter, number three was about bollards. We do have wheel stops, hence their name, they stop the wheels. At that point, he felt, since it was close to the front of the building, that additional bollards on those, those four parking spaces would be a good idea, so we, on the plan, the new plan you have in front of you, we just simply added six inch bollards in front of the three western spaces. The fourth space is the handicap space, and there already is a handicap parking sign there, and it already does have a bollard, so that one already has a bollard, so we added three to the other three parking spaces, so all four of those have bollards now. The fourth comment was about snow storage, so on the current plan you have in front of you, if you look, we did a blue speckled shade, and we identified these possible snow storage areas, and they total almost 2,300 square feet. Obviously, there could be additional area, but we identify these areas as shaded in blue as, in most potential for snow storage when, when and if needed. Five, we discussed five at the last meeting as well, that there was some difficulty, I think we used two shades of green, like a light and dark green, and there was some difficulty in this, in seeing what were the existing trees, what was being proposed, what was being removed. So we clarified on this plan, and all of the existing trees just show as kind of a gray, as an existing feature. The proposed trees are all in green now, it's the only thing in green. The trees that are needed to be removed for the site development are shown in red. And as discussed last time, and also with ARB, we're adding many, many more trees than what we're removing with all the perimeter buffer, couple at the street area, trees in front of the building, adding many, many more that are being removed. So we have a net huge increase in trees on site. And that is everything, that covers all of these, right, Joe? So unless there are any questions, that should cover that part pretty well. And we've just got this planned today, only because we just received those fire marshal comments today. Wanted to make sure to incorporate everything, but as you can see, the, all the comments were very minor in nature, and you now have a plan that incorporates all those comments.
Any other questions regarding what was presented to us this evening? Not hearing any, is a continued public hearing, so if there's any member of the public in attendance that wishes to speak on behalf of for or against or online, please come up, identify yourself, your name and address.
My name is Joseph Kuhlow, that's K-U-L-O-W-I-C. I reside at 60 Cromwell Place in Old Saybrook. I'm a, I've been a licensed professional engineer doing environmental engineering for now 50 years. I do admit that, but it's been 50 years. I also am a member of the Water Pollution Control Authority in Old Saybrook and the Inland Weapons Commission. But my presence here and my statement has nothing to do with those two permissions, these are comments I'm bringing up on my own as a private citizen in Old Saybrook. The first statement I can make is that I've reviewed the information that the applicant has provided, it's online and in the zoning file. And my general statement is, if I am not opposed to this project, so if there's any kind of opposition. One ele, or two elements to this kind of project is micro cultivation of cannabis product or cannabis plants. One is the amount of water that's necessary to operate a facility like this. And the applicant went to great lengths in the Inland Weapons Commission proceeding to explain the methodology that was going to use to basically create a water recycle system. Because there, they did not, they recognized they tried to get a permit from the state of Connecticut, not the health department, DEP. The discharge is kind of washed water into the groundwater, the service works, was not really feasible. So they presented a plan for that water recycle. In the statement of use for this project under the zoning regulations, there are, it is explained what the different operations are that are going to go on within the facility. The only one that I could not match up with the statement of use with the plan, with the site plans, were that on drawings A3 and A4 of the plans that were submitted, there is a section in that building that is designated for the various uses that the facility is, or various processes the facility is going to use. And that, and that's a term called extraction. That's on the drawing. Extraction is nowhere mentioned in the actual narrative statement of use. Now, in, in this kind of cannabis processing, the extraction has a particular meaning, it's not a general term, it has to do with being able to extract the active ingredients out of the cannabis plant, which is what the business is all about, along with growing it for other purposes. So I think they just need to clarify if in fact they are going to be doing extraction on the site. Again, the term is on the drawings on A3 and A4 in one particular section, but it is nowhere mentioned in the actual statement of use. The last item is that, or the other item apart from water, is that odor control or potential for uses circumstances. I believe that the commission has gotten authority within their regulations in section 61, Performance, Maintenance and Operation, which has to do with two areas, one is section 6.2, 61.2, smoke, gas and fumes, and then 61.5, odors. So that the zoning commission has the authority to impose conditions upon an applicant to make sure that these regulations are being met, and there's no nuisance being created. I think that tends to dovetail into state regulations, which haven't been amended in a while. Connecticut's, Connecticut agency regulations 228-174-23, control of odors. So that's an underlying statute, that's an underlying regulatory requirement at the state level. I believe that that is implemented by either the Department of Health or also DEP. It just explains what conditions would be considered a nuisance or odor risk. The statement of use has a fairly general, I'll call it a... The, uh, the statement of, of use has a fairly general, I'll call it a, a plain English narrative of what's going to be used for air emission controls. Uh, and being a professional in the field, I understand what the terms mean. And certainly it looks like they've covered all of their bases. But I think it would be important, uh, as part of any approval that's granted for this project to see that one of the conditions, uh, that the applicant prepare and have it ready for use, a, uh, I'll call it a standard operating procedure or an operating manual on how the air pollution control devices are going to be used, monitored, replaced, tested and surveilled. Again, the, the state, the, the terms in the statement of use are pretty general. But these are technical systems. They're filters and absorption carbon and possibly other kinds of, uh, treatment techniques, including, uh, odor suppressants. And I think it's important for that kind of a procedure or a standard operating procedure to be developed. And that it be, it, it be implemented, uh, by the applicant once the facility is built. Uh, the, I, I, I'll give you an example. Statement of work. Statement, sorry. Statement of use talks about odor control and odor. These aren't page number, but it says, "If the facility manager designating operation for potential release of odors on a daily basis, if questionable or offensive odors are detected, the following protocols will be implemented. Investigate, determine the source of the odors, assess the filter system and change filters, ensure the exhaust fans are operating properly and any other techniques that are being used to control the air emissions." Well, to use kind of a slang term, the, uh, of course it's out of part. Uh, I think that they need a procedure that's going to be very proactive so that they're constantly, uh, at a reasonable, uh, uh, frequency monitoring the system and making changes is necessary. For change out of filters and, uh, change out of one assortment that's commonly used. And this is a pretty standard in the industry, activated carbon to take out any of the odorous, uh, uh, chemicals that are, again, these are not chemicals that bring it in. These are things that are coming out of the plant themselves. Doesn't appear that they're going to use any other than fertilizer, that they're going to use any other, you know, exotic type of chemicals. So I will just sum up by saying, I think it would be important for a, uh, a condition be placed upon the applicant to prepare such as standard operating procedures for air emission control and odor control. And that once that is prepared and they're operating, uh, they submit an annual report. It doesn't have to be very long. Presumably things will go smoothly. And that be provided to, uh, the commission and the, uh, town, town planning staff. Yep. Any questions?
Any question?
I have a question. Have you experienced with other facilities that are made, easy to reduce?
There aren't many in Connecticut yet.
I understand that. It's part of our problem too.
Well, I, I think most of what you find in the literature has to do with facilities that have been already constructed. For instance, out in the southwest in, in Denver, in Colorado, in Ohio. And there are facilities that have been constructed in Massachusetts. Some of them are micro, micro, uh, trade or, or micro cultivation. Some of them are open fields. Okay. You do inside or outside. Outside is a little less, uh, capital intensive than what we're talking about here. But the, uh, the compound that causes the odor, it's pretty well documented. It's called terpene, DER. And I provided some information and I applied on that. It has a very, very low, low odor threshold. Like point one parts per million by volume in air. So it, it, it is above that level. You can smell it. And it goes even higher. You can have some issues with not only odor, but also, uh, olfactory, uh, irritation, so to speak, nasal and stuff like that. If it gets up a little higher than that. So the idea is to make sure that you're operating your system and you're monitoring it. And the way it's designed, that you know you're always staying underneath that odor threshold. That's really the important thing. So it's not, it, it, it's, it's running, uh, a pollution control process, much like you would run a water treatment plant or a sewage treatment plant. You're monitoring and you're making sure that everything is balanced. So it doesn't really, uh, I don't think it creates any, any kind of excessive burden on the applicant in that regard. Uh, again, the DEP regulations haven't quite caught up with this yet. The last time they ever amended was 2006. There is a protocol for odor threshold, but they don't name uh, compounds that are associated with the cannabis growing industry yet. But again, there is published information on what that odor threshold is and it's been used in other jurisdictions. I don't know of any other, I don't know of any operating, well, micro, uh, maybe, uh, the applicant's council knows of any micro cultivation facility that's been constructed and operating in Connecticut at this point in time.
Thank you.
So you're, it's the first. As far as I know, this is the first in line.
Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, just a question. So if the, if the commission chooses to approve the application, if they were to make a condition saying that they prepare a standard operating procedures manual on how filtration will be used, monitored and maintained with provisions to handle any odor filtration failure within a recording to the CCL, would that sufficiently address?
I think that, that's a first, that's a first statement.
Would the, uh, applicant, uh, care to comment? This time on, on, um, this presentation?
Sure. Jeremy Correa who's the, who's the cannabis consultant and the, the expert on this stuff who can, who can add, you know, some further comment if, if you'd like. But, um, you know, in, in terms of something a, along the lines that would just suggest that I think we, we would find with that, you know, the way that you described it.
A condition of that sort would be acceptable.
That would give the commission some traditional comfort. Um, yeah, I think we could, I think we could work with that. And I, and I, and to me, I think that would be, you know, I, I think the gentleman had mentioned three things in total. He, he did cite those state of Connecticut standards on what constitutes a nuisance. So I think that's, that's something that's out there, you know, even beyond the zoning commission's regulations or even its expertise, which is kind of a, a further check on things because any, any type of facility, you know, if it were violating those regulations would be subject to some type of claim from a neighbor or potentially the, the state as well. So I think what you've, what you suggested would really cover both of those comments in the sense that the state is, is looking at, at part of it. And then the first point that was made was, um, the question about extraction and is that in the, in the statement, if you said for this one, I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy, but I, I guess my, my take on that, we did reference your processing as part of the description of the use and, uh, I, I think that extraction would be part of the, of the processing activities, but.
Before, before he speaks, there's just one question on your earlier point, uh, regarding, uh, the state, uh, limits that they've already established. Um, how would we know if you exceeded those state limits?
I think what, you know, I think the state limits, they really, you know, potentially, I guess they're limited by two different avenues, you know, if, if a private individual felt that they were being affected by something and it were in excess of the limits that are in the regulations of the Connecticut state agencies, they could, you know, they, they could bring, whether it's an informal claim or a formal claim, they could cite those regulations and, you know, potentially try to demonstrate that there's a violation. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I would think that, you know, DEP or some other state agency with jurisdiction over those regulations, I think may be able to also take action. So again, it's sort of like the, uh, noise standards that are out there and everybody has an ordinance and the state DEP has, has regulations. They can provide a basis for.
I guess another way of asking that question is, is if you, if the applicant became aware of exceeding those limits, is there a mechanism in place for them to notify the land use department of, of that fact?
Yes. So I think, and again, I'm going to turn it to Jeremy, but my, my, my take on that would be, I think all of the protocols that they'll be following, changing filters, inspections, regular monitoring, you know, all of those things would be designed to prevent that situation. If despite their best efforts, you mean, they became aware that we definitely, and again, those standards really talk about what does it take to create a, a nuisance? Um, but if they became aware that they felt they had been in a non-compliant situation for some period of time, could they kind of self-report it is, is your question?
This is my question. It's, it's kind of proactive versus reactive.
Right. And, and, and I think I meant to just ask Jeremy to, to add to what I've said because he's.
Joe, yes. Add one thing.
Yes.
They, as part of the final licensing process, so, you know, going forward to get the micro cultivation license, the state will require very detailed, uh, statements of operation, standard operating procedures. Typically numbering several hundred pages. Those, these are, include odor control, access control, video control, you know, uh, they, and they will make multiple inspections at each stage of construction. A state, the state DCP will send in an inspector at the 25% part, 50%, 75% and then final licensing to inspect these systems and sign off on them. And then annually, they will recheck the, the, the compliance with these systems that they check. So in order to get the license, any micro cultivation facility, which I believe there's actually one operating in Portland right now, um, will need to have direct detailed, um, operating procedures that are approved by the DCP.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. I was going to say another, another option I guess could be to provide you, you know, with a copy of what we're providing with the state or alternatively what. I'm sorry.
Did you want?
Jeremy, did you, um, I guess just in terms of the, the question about extraction, is that part of the, of the processing and could you just very quickly, you know, just explain what that is?
Yep. Uh, Jeremy Correa, C-O-R-R-A-O with Bracton Pistol, consultant for Appleby Holdings. Um, as far as extraction, um, we spoke about this on the last meeting. This is a, this is a solventless extraction. Um, it's, it's used water and heat only. Um, there's no hydrocarbons. There's no VOCs. So I'm, I'm going to leave it pretty general at that because that's, that's really where it stands. It's, um, it's a solventless extraction, no hydrocarbons, no VOCs, no, um, C1D1 rooms required, nothing explosive, um, no volatile chemicals. And, and that's, that's, that's really it. Um, as, as far as odor mitigation, we really get into kind of a three-pronged approach, um, using activated carbon, um, photocatalytic oxidization, which is, uh, basically using UV light to reduce odors. Um, and just general cleaning of the facility at all times, um, as far as a maintenance schedule. Um, we'll have a very clear record keeping of all the carbon filters, um, maintained and filled out of when they're, when they are installed, when they need to be maintained for, um, schedule of maintenance and then also when things need to be changed out. Um, there's monitoring and inspection, uh, monthly of all the systems that, that are happening. Same thing with the HVAC. There's, you know, there's some, there's also UV in the HVAC, which is another level of odor control. We, we, we try to, we try to meet the odor control as hard as we possibly can. Um, the industry standard for activated carbon is typically a air exchange every three minutes. We try to do that or better. Um, typically better than that. Um, and then we develop a form, which is just a community concern form. Um, the community will have the ability to fill this out. This, someone will get back within 24 hours. Um, and then they also have the ability to contact anybody in the state that they feel is necessary. Um, we keep everything on hand at the facility as far as exchanges, new carbon filters, new machines, new UV lights. Um, and other stuff that i- if we had to install more at that time because there was a problem, we would have it in stock at the building at the time to deal with, with the issue at, at hand. Um, our goal is to, to meet all state regulatory um, issues that, and, and, um, regulations that they set out for us. Um, we have a, a very strict kind of application permitting process going through the state as, when, when they come in to check everything out and sign everything off. And that's, that's kind of it. So.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think what your staff had suggested in terms of the submit to, to staff, um, the standard operating procedures with the annual report, that's probably the best way to say it because I think some of these things that we're submitting to the state of Connecticut go far beyond odor per se and, you know, get into other security and other issues as well.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience or online that has any questions? If you do online, raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone online raising their hand. And if there's no one else in the audience at this time. Um, is your presentation and such completed?
We are in, in, in closing, you know, I would just say, we, we believe we meet all the applicable requirements of your regulations. Um, I, I touch upon those in the opening, in the open hearing, but we think that we've demonstrated um, that it's in keeping with the area, that there will not be any adverse impacts to the area. And, uh, site plans and compliance, ARB, you know, and, and the wetlands permit has been granted. So we thank you for your time and attention and you have helped with the application.
Are there any questions from the commissioners at this point before we move?
I have a question. Um, Jay brought up water consumption and I'm wondering, um, if there will be some sort of closed system for condensing and recycling water? And if that falls under the state regulations or?
That's one of Jeremy's questions. Uh, we did go, uh, through this at the wetlands level very extensively and everything basically is recycled and reused at house. Uh, Jeremy, uh, who's online, he'll put more about that water system. Um, it's very similar. All recycled. There's no, no exterior discharge. Um, there are all kinds of controls in the basement. If there was ever any leak or protection systems, uh, there are controls on top of controls. So that was again looked at heavily, uh, at the wetlands level. And as, as you know, wetlands, they approved the project, that information was provided to them. And there's also no discharge of anything out of the building other than domestic wastewater into the substances.
Is that something, uh, to your point that you said, if a water system goes bad, okay, there isn't going to be discharge from the facility. It's going to go into the swamp store or the wetlands. It's going to be a burden on the applicant. He's going to put that water in tank trucks all the way. So there's a definite incentive to make the water operate as efficiently as possible. And like, uh, you said there, that, that information is on file, uh, in the land use office as part of the application material that was submitted that, that the, uh, Inland Weapons Commission had.
Right. I'm sure, right. Just for, for the record that, um, as, as everyone knows, I do sit on the inland wetlands. And that was a lengthy discussion, and they came back with further details. Uh, to the commission that were found to be acceptable. Um, uh, responses and actions to that concern. Uh, and, and therefore, the wetlands commission, uh, discussed. And voted unanimously on that. Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Um, have all the referrals been entered into the record?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So we can, uh, is the commission prepared to close public hearing? All right, so I'd make a motion to, uh, close public hearing on the, uh, Appleby Holdings LLC application for special exception used to construct the twelve thousand. Six hundred square foot cannabis micro cultivation facility, nine custom drive, map forty-six, one dash nine. Gateway business B four district. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Justin. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any discussion to go move to a vote? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, passes five zero zero. So public hearing is closed, so discussion at this point can be among the five commission, commissioners that are seated here this evening. Is this something we're prepared to deliberate on and vote this evening? Okay, so, um, I will make a motion to approve the Appleby Holdings LLC application for special exception use. To construct the twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-four square foot cannabis micro cultivation facility, nine custom drive. Map forty-six, one dash nine, gateway business B four district with the following condition. Applicant prepare a standard operating procedural manual on how filtration would be used, operated. Monitored and maintained with the provisions to handle any odor filtration. Uh, annual report, uh, to be submitted to the Z E O officer.
Odor filtration failure.
Oh, is that what? That's right, odor, odor filtration failure. Let me think about the, to join. Um, I'd also just like to, to note whether we should do it a, as part of a, uh, thing, but the, uh, document that we were handed this evening. From the engineer, uh, relative to the updates that reflected, uh, a number of questions as it related to Mr. Jacobson's email. Are, are so noted on that plan and do not need to be mentioned as a condition, because they're reflected on the plan. Okay?
Right, yes, suggested probably as part of the motion for approval, and that, uh. The, uh, that's the way to go. So the, the applicant has complied with section fifty-three for cannabis micro culture, cultivation. Micro cultivate, micro cultivation facility, allow it as a special exception use and a special exception use. Under section fifty-two and section fifty-three in, in this B four district. And the public health and safety concerns with regard to emergency vehicle access to the, um, sprinkler. As page three, statement of use, building has been satisfied and the O S fire marshal. Uh, as the O S fire marshal has requested. The proposed use buildings and structures are in conformance with. The regulations, especially with regard to the. General standards and section sixty-one, the performance standards, provided that the priest, previously stated stipulation is met.
So added to the motion. Seconded by Justin, and he is seconded by Justin.
Oh, okay.
Seconded, you, you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, move on to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, passes five zero zero. Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, moving to new business, um, A, Little Pub preliminary discussion to expand outdoor seating and add agricultural uses. At twelve thirty-one and twelve thirty-five, Boston Post Road, accessories map twenty-seven, lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine. Business B three district, pedestrian node, applicant one, two, three, one, B Pro's LLC, agent Joe Wren, professional engineer. Mr. Wren, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Joe Wren, professional engineer of Indigo here in Sabra. Uh, no application here, uh, just to reconfirm, this is just a preliminary discussion. Um, Chris had recommended that we come and talk to you. We have a little bit of a different project, so we wanted to discuss it with you. To, uh. Just to determine, uh, our steps moving forward through the process. So. You're all familiar with Little Pub, we know the location, um, we were in front of the commission seven or eight years ago. Used to be the old Saladoros, and we got all the site plan approved and so forth. They have since bought, um, the two properties to the west, so they own the little house that's right next door. And they also own a larger parcel back here where the overhead power lines go over, and then. A fairly large, uh, area of wetlands on that property as well. Um, during COVID, as you all know, we had some temporary outdoor seating, uh, for a few years. At that time, they, uh, added some temporary outdoor seating on this side. The outdoor seating on the left side or the west side, we had approved as part of the original application. They added temporary outdoor seating over here, um, and then they also added some gravel. Over in this area for additional outdoor seating when everyone had to be outside, uh, or non-operational, so. The, this all started because they want to come to you, and they want to keep those outdoor dining areas, which have been functioning, uh, for the past few years very well. Uh, but they also want to do some more creative things. They want to create an agricultural use on the property. If you all went around back, you'll see that there are chicken coops, there are goat pens back there. Uh, right now, they have some bee hives, they would like to add, uh, some additional bee hives, they would like to, back here in a cleared area. They would like to plant some blueberry bushes, raspberry bushes, it would make more of like an agricultural kind of field of use. Here, we have two, uh, food trucks that are accessory to the restaurant, which are allowed. Uh, in the regulations, they aren't allowed by themselves, um, but since they're accessory to a principal restaurant use. Uh, those would be there, and these are just, uh. Uh, port, uh, portal outdoor bathroom, so everyone's not going back in, in and out of the building. Um, and generally, that's it. In a nutshell, it's very, there's very little clearing, really no grading, not a lot of physical work to be done. Uh, there is this gravel parking area back here, which has been, uh, we were just there on Friday night, it was very, very busy, but there were still parking spaces. The parking seems adequate for the, the current uses. These additional uses back there would be mostly daytime uses, and not really so much, uh, nighttime uses. We do have a very detailed statement of use that the applicant has been preparing, obviously, that's not part of this right now. It's just to discuss the project with you, and, uh, as Chris and I discussed, just to kind of determine our path moving forward. This yellow area here is an area where most of the agricultural things, the berry bushes, the gardens, the goat pen, chicken coop, all that is contained. Uh, so we didn't know if we should. Put agriculture use of just a portion of the property or over completely all three properties. It would still, it would not change the zone of the property, but it would just be, I look at it, it's kind of like an overlay, uh, use to this property. It's kind of interesting, we don't really have anything like it in the time or the general area. Um, I don't really see that it, um, you know, uh. Incites any sort of mayhem or not really an intensification of the use, it just kind of opens up the property, they do have some land here. Um, and they would just like to add those, those additional interest in users on the property. So with that, I don't know if there's anything I missed, Chris, that you may want to add or not. Uh, but generally, we're just looking for a path forward, and discussion is modification of the special exception, right? Uh, that we previously got, but. How do we do that in this case, you know, applying the agricultural and what are we specifically asking?
Can you just clarify for the dogs, what will you be doing with the food trucks?
Uh, proposing two food trucks back here, uh, that are accessory to the principal use on the property, which is a restaurant, indoor restaurant. Which is allowed by zone.
On, on that, on that point on the food trucks, uh, will those be Little Pub only food trucks, or will they be outside?
Uh, they, they will be exterior.
Outside, other, other. Other vendors.
He owns three food trucks.
Yeah, he owns three, so it would generally be his.
So it would be limited to a Little Pub food trucks, labeled Little Food.
No, they're, they're labeled different, they have.
Yeah, they might be labeled.
But owned by, but owned by.
Owned by, we can say that, yeah.
So it's not as though they're gonna invite jackrabbits to come in with a food truck to sell.
More like a swan and rent a chair.
These properties are beyond.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a, um, this even goes a little bit beyond there. This property is pretty large, I don't remember the exact size of that, I'm not sure if we listed it or not. Um, this one's pretty small with the house on it, but this area here with the overhead power lines and wetlands is fairly large.
What I'm asking was, beyond that property or next to it, is there, the goats gonna bother anybody?
Now, there is a, this is all business own, of course, there is a residential home here. Um, obviously with perimeter buffering, um, some screening, if we're gonna identify what is there. Um, if it needs to be supplemented, that would be there, but the goats are already on site, there hasn't been any complaints or. Chris, the, the pens are way over on the other side of the property, so plenty of distance. Are you proposing to merge the properties? Um, so that was another part of the discussion, so he definitely wants to do the agricultural use on all of them. He's not opposing, uh, so he's, he's not opposed to merge all of the properties. Um, how that would benefit is. For example, the gravel outdoor eating area straddles the property line, so you wouldn't technically have perimeter buffers on both sides of that property line. So there are some benefits, um, financially and tax purpose wise, it's probably not. The wisest thing to do to, to, to merge it all, but I think he is leaning in that direction.
And now we're merging all three properties?
Um, at least these two and potentially that third one, yes.
And, and a reluctance to merge the three, the third one would be why?
Uh, well, it's just small and it's separate, kind of on its own right now, um, it doesn't really make anything. There, there is a, um, a pretty good solid evergreen buffer along that edge right now, it doesn't really. Make anything more conforming, because all of this is very conforming as it is size-wise, coverage-wise. Even taking out the wetlands are still way below the amount of coverage and so forth.
Where is the, is the power line easement, does it go across this property?
Uh, the overhead power lines are right here.
All right, so keep that in mind, that can't, can't obstruct or build on the easement.
Correct, yeah, the only thing underneath those power lines would be some berry bushes. That they could easily have access to, no, no large trees or anything, it's already clear.
Put a fence on the easement or anything.
Correct, yeah, everything, right now, the surveyor is working on surveys for all three and flagging the wetlands and all that, but we just wanted to know. Once we get those maps in, we just wanted to have a good directed path.
So there, during the COVID episode, there was a tent there for use. Is the tent going to be part of what you're thinking, Joe?
Um, we didn't really discuss the tent, I know the tent they were talking about, it's all open now, the tent is not there now, but as far as being proposed. Um, I don't believe he's.
So the, the tent in the parking lot was removed. And the proposal is where the food trucks are, there's another seating area with picnic tables. That they wanted to use to kind of expand the outdoor seating, and then if there was an event, have the food truck service. The event instead of having food go back and forth through the parking lot.
Right. So, but the, the tent in itself, it, it becoming a permanent structure adds to the mix.
Yeah, I don't think there's any permanent structure, I mean, there, if there was a certain event out there and the weather didn't look good, I mean, I imagine they could have a temporary tent, right, but not.
It's probably a good question just to ask for temporary.
Because right now, you'd, you'd be looking at seasonal use, wouldn't be used in, uh, winter.
Like the chicken coops and the goats would stay there year-round, but as far as.
Seeding, that seating area.
Right, right, right.
You might want to ask that question, because if it rains.
Yeah, yeah, about the tent, that's not a fair question. That's why we wanted to come to first and get these questions and. Have that good path forward, it's not our typical special exception on Boston Post Road, but we know that. Uh, so exactly what you're.
If the lots are not merged, there would be perimeter landscape buffer requirements around the perimeter of this lot. And, um, it appears to me that there's inadequate interior parking lot landscaping to the rear of the building. And there's more than four rows of parked cars in a row. It would, there would have to be a landscape island intervening, so that there's max of one row of cars, then two rows. Then one row, then landscaping, you can't have five rows of cars in a row.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about, uh, landscape islands, and that was another thing that we wanted to bring up with you. On what those are required by, this is all crushstone, it's completely stained crushstone. Um, it's not being paved at all, but certainly, you know, that's one of the requirements we had, landscape islands.
At this restaurant, and also the, not too far away, Luigi's. There is a very unclear traffic flow throughout the parking lot. And there would have to be some directional signs and or curving to make the cars go in a sensible way, because. Leaving Route One to enter the site, the pavement has an hour of on it to direct traffic in a counterclockwise fashion around the building. You enter and you go around that one, so if you reach the rear of the building and you're looking for a parking space. And there are other cars that are looking to. Maybe get close to the main door on the west side, or leave the parking lot entirely. There could be some real traffic congestion. At the, uh, north, northeast corner of the building.
Yeah, there's currently a, a double aisle, like a twenty-four foot width here, but. Um, it does, as you said, it is, it does have arrows for one-way traffic. Uh, all the way around, and then this is one-way going out that way as well. Sometime, you know, people are gonna find that closest parking space, so if they come in. And they see a space over here, they're gonna go try to get it, even though that's just one way coming out.
Unless you put landscaping. Uh, direction in there at the entrance that would only allow a turn to the. To the right or counterclockwise.
Well, that, that would be difficult, um.
Not from the street, but as you enter into the property.
Yeah, you, you might be able to introduce some sort of island or signage. Um, you know, trying to force people that way, but it's, I, I've seen those work and not work all the time. People, they see that space in the front doors right here.
They're given access, they're gonna go.
They're gonna go, the person that follows the rules is gonna go around and go in, but there's gonna be a lot of people that are in a hurry, like most of us nowadays, sometimes. No matter what's there, and this is all, I mean, this is all nice, they, they repaved it, the landscaping looks nice from part of the building. Um, the outdoor dining areas, you know, they want to do something on this side to match the other side, right, the stone wall. Um, you know, maybe the fertile law, uh, on top of there is to match the other side rather than just that comfort, timbered comfort areas.
Elevation goes up as you go north, right?
What, what goes up?
Elevation, then ground elevation is higher in.
It's fairly flat back here, and then, then it increases. It does rise, so.
Storm, stormwater drains, yeah.
Um, stormwater, we're not really changing, because this is, this is crushstone, the eating area and the parking area, that's been there for. Um, a while, and we're not heating that, we're not changing that at all. So the starter is a fertile, it's, we're not, other than a couple of food trucks and, you know, maybe a shed here and there or something like that, it's, uh. That's about it.
Are the three parcels already surveyed?
Uh, that's what I mentioned before, they're currently in the process of getting them surveyed, yes.
I, I, I would think another commissioners can comment here, but I would think that. Uh, the commission would be, look favorable upon the three properties being merged. For this discussion and that future application.
Okay. That, that's the type of feedback that we're looking for.
Or agreement to.
Or agreement to.
Yes.
Right, that is, yeah.
Yeah, it would be definitely a positive.
Appleby allowed to pet the goats?
Yes, yeah, it's all, it's all, you know, we don't want to say petting zoo, because I don't know if that's in your regulations or not, but it's. It's, um, and I don't know from a liability standpoint, I don't know about that, but to go up and, and see them, yes. I'm not sure if it's intentional petting or feeding or not, I don't know, but public health. I'm not sure if it's petting or feeding or not. I don't know the public health issues associated with that.
Are they looking to expand the goat and the chicken population? Because right now. You can, if you bring your quarters, you can feed the goat. They.
Okay, so they do have that.
They do something that's.
It's like an old candy machine.
Okay, and the chickens are.
The kids can feed the.
So it's pretty entertaining, but are they looking to have more goats and chickens or?
I don't know that exact question. My, my guess would, I think they only have two or three goats now, so my guess is maybe they would expand that. I mean, not like thirty. It's not going to be a full on farm, but maybe six or seven or eight or something, you know.
So statement of use would define what animals.
Yeah, number of livestock. I mean, you, your regulations usually say if you have an agricultural use, you need a limited number of livestock, so I guess we would have to try to meet those.
Or maybe just kind of put a maximum. So, you know, we have two now, but the most we would ever have is eight.
Yeah, as long as that method, the livestock.
Because it started with gone and then one got lonely.
A point that Brenda. Mentioned that came up in my mind relative to people just coming in for the, we'll just call it zoo at this point. Will there be specific parking? For that area?
I don't know what is, I, I, I feel that is intended, it's just like the users of the restaurant. Have that as kind of like an accessory, like another draw. But I can't disagree that some people are just going to want to go on a Saturday afternoon with their kids and say, oh, let's go see the cute goats. So we, we certainly can, you know, like this back row parking, for example, we certainly can. You can dedicate those for those uses, those berry picking, goats, chicken, you know, whatever.
Well, plus you might have different times. I mean, kids are going to go in the morning or during the day to go pet the goats where you're not necessarily at dinner time to go.
Correct.
Which might have a. Function where the food trucks are that involve. Atting goats. Anything else?
This appears to be. Different in concept to the section fifty three special standards, food and beverage concession service, which applies to same in the park. Just make sure that it doesn't get close to what's already in.
Chris, did you want?
So I think many years ago, just to, and this is part of the reason. That the applicants here is there was a discussion, I think it was one eight cloud nine and one other business that had a food truck. And I believe the zoning commission left it that if you had a restaurant. You could have an accessory food truck on the premises, but I think it's different than the food and beverage concession stand. Because that's a standalone food truck or concession stand.
I'm just saying, don't, don't let them, don't mix them up. Keep them distinctly apart.
I think they have a lot, have to have a lot of food trucks too.
No, that was my contention when there was a lot of discussion about food trucks. That the first place to allow a food truck on a site would be one where there's already a restaurant. And that way the restaurant has experience in handling food waste and deliveries and all the stuff that goes with the food truck. And they'd have to have a restroom on site to handle additional customers. And somebody else would say, why would a restaurant want to have a food truck on site? Well, exactly. But why would you allow a food truck to go on a lot next to a restaurant if there wasn't already a restaurant there? That's just tip highly that it's a restaurant. Food truck is a restaurant on wheels. And if it's on the same lot as a restaurant in a building. Seems to me it'll work better than if you just allow food trucks, restaurants on wheels anywhere.
So a question now that you're. Talking about it so much. Or we're talking, we're getting into it, but I guess the question is, what if somebody had a party and they had a little pub food truck and they wanted to have a Ben and Jerry's truck? Wouldn't be allowed.
Gary wrote that down.
I would, no, I was just thinking about that because you're going to have goats and kids and.
Unless he buys a Ben and Jerry's.
Well, you know, I'm, it's just a thought.
Allowing a food truck. Allowing a food truck at Mercine, the brewery. The concept was that the food truck would provide food that Mercine wasn't equipped to provide. They were not a restaurant. At that point in time. And they controlled who the food truck was and the hours of operation. In this case, we'd be looking to see. That there's some control of the food truck by the little pub. And that and the hours of operation are a part of that. And that, see, the difference is that we're seeing you would go to the food truck because you were also going to Mercine. In this case, if you go to the food truck, you may not also be going to little pub. So the the connection is not the thing.
Well, I would say it would need to be, the condition would be that it truly is an accessory to the business, so it would operate within those same hours and parameters.
Yeah, right.
Which is why it being owned by Little Pub.
But it would, it seems to me that the food truck hours would be no more, no longer, they would be more restricted, more limited. Than the hours of the restaurant. But the restaurant couldn't close at eleven.
Right, it would have to have the same.
The food trucks can't go outside. The food trucks close when the restaurant closes.
Any other comments? Do you have enough?
Could you answer, Jordan? Yeah, I do. So just have to, you know, get those surveys back, talk to the applicant, you know, make these changes, discuss that with them. Get some, we already have a pretty solid statement of use in accordance with the regulations. But adding some of this detail as far as number of livestock and making sure that means the agricultural.
And no outdoor music with amplification.
Yes, outdoor music, yes, no amplification. We already discussed that.
Yeah, but if you're going to have an outdoor event, you wouldn't have music or a tent. That's something.
They could have music, it's no amplification. And within the guidelines of the noise.
Looking forward to the application.
Right, awesome. Thank you very much.
Continuing on to committee representatives and staff reports.
I will make it quick. As you can see, there's a lot fewer signs on the streets. Continue the sign enforcement and Public Works has done several sweeps of signs within the right of way, so they actually. Had a pretty significant pickup from window washing to. I'll buy your junk. I'll buy you, I'll sell you a bag to put your junk in, whatever it is. So that's been going pretty well. I think things are looking a little better.
They do look good. And thanks to Public Works Department for that assist.
They've gone out twice so far, so.
Chris, can I ask a question? So seventy forty four Boston Post Road is a little condensed. Contract purchase around right now. The, we had a two by three sign out there. Talking about it, right? Pushing sign. Were limited to two by three because of these regulations and the sign disappeared.
Was it in the right of way?
It was in the grass island in the front, so the sign disappeared, so it was like.
Was it in the right of way? I guess that's the.
I don't know if it was and I don't know how they would know if it was.
So already makes it typically as a meat bowls. And then there's certain places and we do have maps and marks.
Right. So I didn't know if a private person grabbed it for whatever reason, or now that you just mentioned that, it's just setting that. It's two by three, it's in compliance in a little, little tiny writing just to be in compliance with the two by threes. And it just disappeared, so.
Well, they meant last week, so.
All right.
Okay, that could, that could be a possibility, but the state actually picks them up too. So they'll go around every once in a while. They get complaints for sightlines. And I mean, they pick up, we've been picking more of the smaller.
One time I had a real estate sign up on fifty two Spencer Plains Road and they contacted, the state contacted me, they actually reached out.
No, so they, they ended up.
There was an email or a phone number.
We used to pick up the signs, you know, here and there and then the state would get complaints. So then they would call me and say, we picked up our signs. I said, I didn't pick up the signs and I called the state and they're like, well, if it's in our right of way, it's litter. You know, it's a sightline issue, so they just, so there's times they just take them on.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
And then just the other thing, I think I mentioned it, August seventh, it's a Wednesday. It's a planning official meeting, but Matt Willis is going to come and. Speak about affordable and fair housing. And the discussion will be catered so that it'll meet your continuing add credits as any pushing members. I'll send out something.
Yeah, one day fifth is our meeting.
That's about it.
Was this anything that we needed to keep this in?
Oh, that was.
Or was that meant to somebody else?
Oh, this was. ARVs are going to need to start thinking about their.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
I did.